Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the city council meeting for April 5th of the City of Cannon Falls to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Bringle.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
Chesby.
Here.
Cronenberger.
Here.
Lundell.
Here.
Montgomery.
Here.
Althoff.
Here. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is the council got any corrections or additions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Duncan and a second by Lundell to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? Carried. Okay. Public input? Nothing on the list? Okay. We'll move right to the public hearing. Tonight we'll have a public hearing. It's on the organized solid waste collection. And Neil, if you want to make an opening statement on that?
Back on March 1st, city council held a work session to discuss the process of organized solid waste collection in the city. It was discussed during that time to do a public hearing, which is tonight. The city can pursue solid waste collection under statute 1, Fund 5A dot 94. If the city wishes to move forward with the process, there will be additional steps that we'll have to do. But tonight, it's for, as you guys discussed at the work session, feedback from the citizens. And we did send out notices to the haulers. Anybody that had picked up a license from the city, we sent out the public hearing notice that we sent in the paper. I don't know, sir, you got anything to add?
If I can get my microphone on. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I do want to add just briefly, so this is a pretty involved process. If the city decides to go forward with it, there's a negotiation period, there's a committee, there's a public hearing and notice to everyone. There's a potential of a referendum from the charter. Collection can't start until after six months after all of this is done. So this is a very long process. It's a very involved process. This is a very early step. The city's in fact really pre-processed. We haven't even really started the process yet. The council discussed it at a workshop, thought it was worth discussing, and wanted to get the public's input. So that's what tonight is for. I'm certainly here to answer any specific questions, if anyone has any. But really, my understanding is the council's looking for the public's input on this topic.
Yeah, we're not trying to force anything on anybody. We just, the recycling contract comes up at the end of the year. Like I say, the council decided that as long as we're going to do the recycling contract at the end of the year, we looked around and we saw other cities around the area had one collection or two trash haulers and got a very competitive rate. And so we decided, let's have a public hearing, get the public here, and see what they say about it. I mean, we're not forcing anything. This is just a public hearing in very early stages. We don't have to do anything. But, you know, one of the reasons that we were talking about last fall was, I think right now in the city, we've got like four or five haulers. And then if you include the roll-offs, there's about eight or nine haulers in the town. And I kind of look at it in the summertime when it's 90 degrees, you got all these trucks coming through every day ripping up roads and your alleys. I mean, they're going through your alleys and on your streets, and they're ripping up the roads. I know if you had one or two haulers, you know, it'd save on the streets and all that, too. That's one way we're looking at it. And then again, if we had one or two haulers, I think we could get a real competitive rate. I saw what's happened in a few of the neighboring towns, and it's very competitive. I thought I got a good deal when I switched to Highland here about a month ago. And then I got even better rates in Zambroda and Pine Island. Just to say, there's going to be competitive rates. And the third thing is, you could put it on your city sewer and water bill. You don't have to deal with the trash hauler, you know, and it'd be on your city sewer water bill, which I thought was a convenience. It's one less thing you had to pay, you get, you know, a bill from the city. But that's just what we were talking about. Nothing, you know, we're just not forcing anything. We're just looking for your opinion tonight. That's where we're at, so. Anybody wants to come forward? John, come on.
Well, Derek.
Yeah, come right up here.
Let me have a deep enough. Okay. Okay, John Lee, live on the north side. Two reasons I don't want to go with the city taking over my trash is I can get a better deal for myself by negotiating against the haulers than the city saying, here's our bid. That's what we're going with. And if every town goes to the same guy hauling trash, you don't get a competitive rate anymore. You got a monopoly going on. And then they start telling you how much they're going to charge you to pick up your trash. I pay $18 a month through Highland. Waste Management was charging me $54 a month for a 35-gallon can. I'm lucky if I put it out once a month. So it was no-brainer to me to go with Highland. Waste Management sure wanted to say, hey, we'll negotiate. I said, if you knew you're charging me too much already, you should have called and reduced it, not wait for me to call you. So I'm totally set against one person or one conglomerate picking up trash, whether it's Highland Waste Management or some other company. If we don't keep them bidding against each other, we won't have negotiating power anymore. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? Come on. Yep, come forward. Floyd.
My name's Floyd Hauser. I'm, live on the west side on Park Street. I've got a little bit of experience in the waste industry, former owner of Green Line Disposal and a couple of years of experience as general manager of Materials Recovery in Rosemount. As Green Line Disposal had provided service in Northfield, Pine Island, Rochester, Winona, and about a dozen smaller communities. And Green Line acquired, the point I'm going to make here is that competition is better than not having it. Green Line Disposal had some communities with limited licenses, contracts, some open competition. I mentioned a little bit about Rochester. There were four major haulers in there. We acquired the smallest hauler. And there was competition, but we kicked it up a notch. We offered 65 and 96-gallon containers. Most of the collection was in 30-gallon cans with removable lids that seemed to migrate around the community when it was windy. So people liked that. And pretty soon, the other haulers had to do the same thing. But not only did it, was it something people liked? It opened the way for automated collection, which reduces cost. And on the other hand, we had some small communities that when we acquired Green Line already were there. I can't recall, but it was an annual bid or every other year. But only one year did anybody show up to compete. So you might not get competitive bids all the time. And then the winning bidder, it's a sweet deal. One bill, one check, no collection problems. Lowers his cost, of course, yes. But on the other hand, it's government confiscating another man's business. Doesn't seem like the American way. And some of these haulers worked for years to build it up, and then government comes along and says, hey, we're going to give this to somebody else. And as the newspaper stated, it's going to save money for everyone. Well, not everyone. In my case, I live in a condo. We share a 96-gallon container. We've done this for 11 years, and the previous owners did it for about 18. And I question whether you can beat that price that we're getting. Now, you say, well, the recycling's working wonderful. Well, yeah, it's working. But if I had a choice, I'd have one, we'd be sharing a 96-gallon container for that, too. We got three of them sitting out in front. We don't have any place to put them in the wintertime. Now, we're going to have four. We're going to cover our garages. It's not a good deal for us. Okay, as far as street damage, I know you're going to haul the same amount of garbage whether you got four haulers or two or one. So I question how much you're going to save. Before they resurfaced Park Street, we had, well, they resurfaced the three streets that lead up to 19. Now, two of those streets, there was never a collection vehicle on them. They had potholes just like the rest. So I think the waste haulers are getting a lot of the blame that really goes to freezing and re-thawing. So I want to summarize it and say, just by saying, consumers like choices, so let's keep giving them a choice. And that's my thought and opinion. And I think we've had enough government interference with our lives the last two and a half years. We don't need another one. Thank you.
Thanks, Lloyd.
Good evening.
Hi.
My name is Goldinda Kuhn. Thank you for all you do. I know it's not an easy job, and I appreciate all the work you put into it. And I especially appreciate that you've invited our input. Thank you so much. Regarding the waste management going into one large company, as is an idea already that you're proposing, I checked into that company. And when I checked the Better Business Bureau, Waste Management Incorporated, it had a very low rating. I printed it out because I couldn't believe it myself, like one star out of five. It also had 1,745 complaints closed in the last three years and 1,698 complaints in the last 12 months. When I looked up Highland and Flom and a few others, they had A-plus ratings, five stars. One complaint with Highland, one bad review. It just goes to say something. I've talked to quite a few people when we had to change our waste management, and we wanted to hear from quite a number of our neighbors, who would you suggest, who are you going with? And by and large, it was nice to have a choice, as was already said, a choice to go with a smaller company. If you're going to say something like, we're worried about the streets, well, then we'd have to get rid of quite a few pickup trucks that I know of. And, yeah, it's just nice to have a choice and to have some competition. I'm personally, and my husband and I are personally, not in favor of the government taking care of us by putting it into, you know, a one-package deal with finances. We'd rather make our own choices as well. Thank you.
I don't think we ever, I don't think we ever said we were going with Waste Management.
I think that might be a confusion, the name Waste Management, and we were talking about Waste Management. There are two different things.
When we signed a recycling agreement five years ago, it was with Gibson. And we awarded a local contractor of that. And then, of course, Waste Management bought out Gibson, and they honored the contract. And as Dale told me, it was a darn good contract. So, you know, we had no problem with it. But now that contract is up at the end of the year, you know, we really don't know what we're going to expect as far as...
If this goes through, and there's no guarantees of anything right now, but if we're not giving it to Waste Management, I'm sorry, is my mic off?
Waste Management isn't in on the deal. It's open to any bidder, you know, Highland or Pig or anybody, Flom, if they want to come in.
Yeah, but is it going to be low bid? Because...
No, we don't have to go low bid. We do not have to go low bid.
When we chose Gibson back in the day for our recycling, they were not the low bid. But we elected to go with a more local company. So we do take that into consideration.
So that's, I know that's really confusing, but, because the words...
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Come on up.
Come on up.
My name is Jean Stangler, and we live on the west side on Minnesota Street. And my problem with a community hauling is people who go away for six weeks, two months, three months in the wintertime.
It's all in there.
Have to, I call the garbage company, I say, we're going to be gone. So I don't pay.
Right.
For the time that I'm gone.
Right.
With the city taking it over, nine chances out of 10, I'm going to pay my...
No, you call the city. We have that right in the...
You know, if you're going like the snowbirds like that.
Yeah.
You don't pay.
That's a great question.
And the 96-gallon, whatever it is, we have the smaller one. There's two of us. We're retired. We don't even fill that.
Right.
And so now I'm going to have this big chunking thing sitting in my garage or outside.
Should be two different sizes.
There should be at least two different sizes. There should be, anyway.
I think what I saw was it was going to be...
Well, we haven't even, and thank you for bringing that up, because we haven't even put out the request.
That would be part of the negotiation.
So we'll make sure that's in there.
And then I don't know if it would be different prices, because the garbage companies also have different prices for the different sizes. I don't know if that would be part of your thought process as well.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot to it, but thank you for bringing that up.
Those were a couple of the things that I had. And I'm not in favor of Waste Management either.
A lot of us are.
Thank you. Okay, nobody else?
I came to talk trash to you.
I like this at every meeting, Becky.
Yeah, I know. It's getting to be a habit. You guys are doing such a good job. And thank you for listening to me every time I come. But in my opinion, I'm Becky Youngmark, by the way, in case you don't know. In my opinion, organized trash means limited choices for us. And I like the fact, we've had issues with garbage companies in town in the past, and it was nice to be able to call in and get other prices and switch. When they don't show up for two weeks on a consistent basis, or show up a day late or two days late, it was nice to have the leverage to be able to call and switch. And so I know there are people now, there are some seniors, that their kids haul their trash home, and so they don't need to pay for trash. I think it takes away the competitiveness, too, when you don't have a choice. So the other thing is, if you decide to do this, I would hope that you would take it to the residents as a referendum and let them vote on it. So, anyway, I keep you in my prayers. I'm glad I don't have your job right now.
That's a, that's a good point, because we've talked about that. And I think a referendum vote would probably where it would go.
Good evening. Thank you for opening this forum to us. My name is John Wilcox. I live just off the downtown area. Got some concerns and questions, like many others. I have concerns about loss of individual free market system if you go to an organized trash collection. Also looking at the loss of potential collectors who service a city and how that will affect the revenue of a city. I've lived in cities where a giant corporation, one that has been named here several times already, where they, I was going with the competitive company, and they were bought out. And I was going with the competitive company, and they were bought out. So that is a major concern of mine. Number three, will a performance bond be proposed, and will that drive out smaller collection companies? In other words, if a seven-year bond were offered versus a three- or five-year bond, is that going to drive away some of the smaller companies from the table? Will negotiations with haulers be confidential during the process, or will there be transparency with the public? And at what point will the public be made aware of what's going on? What's being proposed? And will that be prior to a tentative agreement? Will a hauler selected allow use of existing cans or carts? Or will they insist on new carts at the expense of the city, which will be passed on to the consumer? How will inflation of both fuel and non-fuel costs be addressed? For instance, how will labor costs, increased labor costs, over the term of that contract? How are those going to be dealt with? We've talked a little bit about cart sharing, so I think I'll just move on beyond that. Last point is, how might this negatively affect the existing businesses in the community? Will this be a deterrent for future businesses to come into the community? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
My name's Joe Gerton. I live over on the north side, Sixth Street North. My biggest thing is, when Gibson was bought out by Waste Management, I called on deaf ears when my recycling can didn't get picked up for multiple weeks in a row. Once you lose a direct line with your company, you lose representation, you know? Who do you call? You call the city and then hope that they relay your bad service to the provider? And I believe that any business that wants to provide a service here should be able to provide a service. You know, you're taking food out of people who drive garbage truck in this town's mouth of the competitors' companies, you know? At that point, you might as well just manage everything for us. Thanks.
Thanks.
Mayor? My name is Bobby. I work for Highland Sanitation. It's actually my parents' company. My mom and dad own it. I've been working for it since I graduated high school back in 2004, running all the operations now since 2016.
Can you give us a bid right now?
I'm not quite that good. I just wanted to speak towards just a couple of things. I was involved with the St. Paul negotiations when that transitioned to organized collection back in 2018 and the several hundred hours of negotiations that happened there. So I'm intimately familiar with the current process, assuming that the state statute hasn't changed in the last few years. I just wanted to speak towards a couple of points. Lower costs with a city contract are usually, you know, it's generally realizable, especially if people aren't price-checking, which everyone should do with any subscription service. Cable bills, like if you don't call, you'll be paying a lot. You want to be checking on that stuff. Garbage industry is no different. You want to call every couple of years, make sure you're getting a good price, and it's not just getting inflated with yearly, yearly increases year after year after year. But there is usually service sacrifices that come because it can't be as flexible as an open-market system, where people can find companies that are willing to work with them. You know, so like less frequent pickups than weekly is a common thing. Does a company do every other week? Does that even an option, coming into a city contract once a month on call, shared carts, things of that nature? Additionally, you'd mentioned the city potentially being able to put the trash services on the water bill. In my experience and through the St. Paul negotiations, generally, that would only happen if you paid the trash bill to. Because just through the negotiations, so just something to be aware of, is that through the negotiations, we wouldn't want the trash bill if we don't have the revenue, because then there's the risk, if the city delays it at all, then you're really in a really rough spot. So generally, those kind of go hand in hand, as if the city was doing the billing, you'd have to pay the trash bill directly, which creates then the discussion of how do you police, making sure that there's not non-city waste going to the landfill that you're paying for. So that gets into a, it's more complicated than one would think. So just something to be aware of in regard to that. And then the road conditions thing always comes up. It would actually be interesting, I don't know the answer. St. Paul and Bloomington, I believe. St. Paul went to organized collection October 1st of 2018, and Bloomington did, I think, a year or two before that. And I'd genuinely be curious to see if they had any savings in their public works department in regards to road repair, because they've been running organized collection for five and a half years now. So I'd like to, so there should be the way to actually look and see, is there definitively any savings there? Because what we always see is the weather wrecks the roads before the trucks ever get a chance to. Because usually you'll see the ruts from the tires from where the trucks drive on high traffic truck roads, and they don't get to that point. They get potholed, they get destroyed by the flex and the frost heaves. And they just don't survive long enough for the trucks to actually be a main cause of damage. So that would be one way just to look into that, because I genuinely don't know the answer. And it'd be a good thing to just know, like, did that help them? Because it's always a talking point. I'd be curious, it'd be curious for me even to find out.
I guess we just thought of, you got six trucks, and you're running six days a week, and you had one hauler doing it a couple of, maybe, maybe he's doing enough hauling in those two days that makes up for the other trucks coming six days a week.
Yeah. And it's tricky, too, because if you have one truck and he's full, picking up everybody versus if you got six trucks that are halfway.
And they're full, yeah.
You know, because it's like the weight of the truck, I think, it helps and it impacts how much wear and tear there is on the road based on the weight. So there's always, there's so many different facets, and I think the weather's always the biggest thing. But really, with St. Paul and Bloomington, that'd be the best way to actually check and see if they've had any savings in their public works department. Gosh, I have one more point. I know I don't remember what it is.
Waste Management, too. Sorry, I interrupted you.
No, it's totally fine. I should have made a better note for myself here. You know, and appreciate the public forum. And yeah, if anybody has any questions, you know, I'd be more than happy to talk with anybody about it. Same with the residents, because having went through the St. Paul transition, it's like there was pros and cons. The transition was a nightmare, you know, like it would probably, like any transition for a major system like that, it's very difficult and for everyone involved. But there are, there can be pros and cons on both sides, depending on where you end up going with it. And public input is key, you know, public participation and feeling like the community's involved is definitely really important. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Say, Bobby, Bobby, I got a question for you.
Yeah.
Has Highland had a contract as a single hauler with a town?
Yes, so we actually were awarded our first contract. I was 13. And it was the city of Afton, Minnesota, up there kind of by Lakeland, St. Crete Beach, that area. And they won that contract away from Waste Management after they bought out the local hauler Bel Air Sanitation back in the day. And, yeah, and one of the, one of the difficulties they had at the time is that with any city contract, they want multiple other city references. And my parents at the time had zero, you know, which can make it difficult for a smaller hauler, a newer hauler coming into it to be able to even like qualify for the bid, because...
Not to have one.
Yeah, we're good. But like countryside, if he was still around, he would have been, he could have, you know, that would have been a negative aspect to a bid he could have proposed. You know, and this market's incredibly difficult to break into right now. It's multimillion dollars just to try to start up a single route operation at this point in time. So unfortunately, that's not the only problem for anybody trying to break into the market.
Yeah.
But yes, we have that one. That was our first one. You know, St. Paul, when it changed in 2018, became our second, third technically, actually, because we took over the recycling earlier that year in April of 2018 for the, there's three cities, St. Crete Beach... For the, there's three cities, St. Croix Beach, St. Mary's Point, and Lakeland Shores, that did a JPA, Joint Powers Agreement, and they did their recycling services bid, and we won their bid for their recycling services earlier that year. So, now, we have, we currently have three different active cities that we work with and service, whether it's trash recycling or both.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You know, just for FYI, few cities around here, what they do, of course, Red Wing's a bigger city, but in Red Wing, they've got those incinerators over there, so the Red Wing Public Works picks all the trash up in Red Wing and hauls it to the incinerator. So, that's a little different story over there, but Wannamingle, Lake City, Zambroda, Kenyon, they all have one hauler, according to the books. And just throwing it out there, I mean, we don't have to do anything. I mean, we could leave it the way it is, as far as that goes. Floyd?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
You said you don't have to take the lowest bidder?
No.
That was something I had on my notes here, but I forgot to mention it. There is always the perception of corruption, and a lot of times, it's real.
Yeah, like Bill had mentioned, and five years ago, we, it was a Gibson versus, I think, Waste Management at that time, and we took Gibson, and he was a little higher.
Now, I kind of got corrected on that, because I said that. And I think, wasn't it that actually Gibson was slightly lower, but Waste Management wanted to come back a bit again? Didn't they want another, I'm not looking at you necessarily. I thought someone wanted another bite of the apple.
No, I was just told that it was.
Gibson went through two different bid process, because the recycling has been a contract for quite a few years.
I can be completely wrong on that, but that's what I had. Either way, we do not have to take the lowest bid.
Okay, anybody else?
I did think of one more point. Should I come back up again?
Sure, come on up.
I did want to mention, Goodhue, the county of Goodhue, I think, a year or two ago, implemented designation. And that did impact the rates that everyone in Goodhue County pays, because Goodhue County, for disposal to go to Red Wing, I believe, is at 118 a ton right now. And what we're paying, like in Dakota County, is roughly 81 a ton, which is a substantial difference. Ramsey and Washington County, which have designation for their dump up there, and Newport, now that they took over, that's at 87 a ton. So, it's like, out of everywhere we service, Goodhue is the most expensive to get rid of the trash at, substantially so. And that can make it different, difficult to compare city to city to when you look at costs, because if they have different disposal costs, it's a huge factor. 118, yeah, and 118 versus 87 is a big increase in price.
And all the trash collected in Goodhue County's got to go to Red Wing.
Got to go to Red Wing.
Right.
So, that should make the rates pretty competitive with everybody.
But, in, we've got information here based on Zambroda, Wannamingle, Lake City, and Kenyon, Pine Island, all Goodhue County, so.
Yeah.
Those numbers should be similar?
You know, and I don't know further south, if they all have to come to Red Wing also, if there's other locations that are also acceptable for the county, because we don't operate too much further south in Cannon Falls.
I think the county.
I would think so.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't know if there's like a facility down there that would also satisfy their needs as far as transferring it, or just because I don't operate, we don't operate much further south in Cannon Falls. I think we're about five, 10 miles south is about as far as we go. So, that's it. Just wanted to mention that part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I add another point?
Sure, come on up.
Why not?
Well, simply because I tried to do some homework about it, because, okay, I take the point that it's not Waste Management Incorporated, it's Waste Management in general. But, I think the big fear in a small town is that big business is going to come and walk over us, and I know you're aware of that. But, I mean, when I looked into the bigger business that's been buying out our smaller ones, I mean, that big business, WM Incorporated, has been guilty of fraud in the past. They have huge lobbyists, and they are aiming at being, you know, the one and only. So, it's just something that, I think it raises the hackles in each one of us, like, oh, our little town is going to be taken over by these big businesses. And that's, I think, just our heartfelt concern. I know you're hearing it, so thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
I guess I had a question on, as you move forward with the process, what is the, is there any talk about an out? You know, if the company that you got, if it did happen, and they end up getting bought out, such as Gibson, by Waste Management, does that now put the contract in void? It should be, I mean, it's happening more and more. Not saying that Highland is going to get bought out by Waste Management, but it's happened twice to this small town already.
Well, when Highland took over for Gibson with the recycling, they had to abide by the contract in place.
You meant Waste Management.
Waste Management.
What did I say?
Yeah.
Sorry, Bob.
Yeah, they had, they had to abide by the contract.
Regardless if they have to abide by the contract, the one thing I have noticed with recycling services, it's gone down substantially since it's been taken over by Waste Management. So, as you move forward, I think there should be, you know, if the company sells, now that contract is in null, in my opinion.
What do you mean it's gone down?
What's gone down?
What's gone down?
I could speak for my entire neighborhood that the, the days that it's supposed to get picked up, it doesn't happen.
You mean the quality of the service?
The quality of service.
Okay.
Yeah.
Price, I'm sorry.
But, I mean, and then you call, and I don't know who the poor gal is at the city that has to hear from the whole neighborhood when our recycling doesn't get picked up. But, you know, I find myself throwing recycling in the garbage can, because it's like, I wish I had more time to run it down to the recycling place too, but when, when it's, the can sits out there for two weeks and it doesn't get picked up, I have to call the city and hope that they represent my frustration, you know? So, if that's a, that should be a, I mean, I don't know the legal end of it, but if the company sells, then it should go back out for negotiation, in my opinion.
Can we make it non-transferable, or is that?
Yeah, that's all stuff we can negotiate, no assignment or assignment only upon approval. It can be tough, because you can't just stop everyone's garbage collection on a Friday and have something up and ready to go by Monday.
Right.
So, it can be difficult to administer, but those are things we can negotiate. And we can also, the hope would be that with the city being a bigger client, that when the city calls and complains, it would get.
You could say within six months or something of.
So, that's certainly something we can negotiate. We can also negotiate service level quality, and if they fail to fail X number of times, and they're breached, and so, yeah, there are, there are those types of things we would want to negotiate in.
Okay, anybody else? This is the time.
Will there be other choices?
Yeah, we'll probably have more public hearings in the future.
We caught you, John. We caught you.
Don't listen to John.
Okay, I'm not hearing, I don't see anybody else. We're going to close the public hearing. Thank you for your input.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep. Okay, let's get into the consent agenda. Consent agenda items may be adopted under one motion as presented, or may be removed for discussion and resolution as council business. For you at home and in the audience, I'll go through the consent agenda. Item A, just and correct claims for the accounting period ending March 30th, 2022. Item B, the minute meetings for the March 15th, 2022 city council meeting. Item C, approve Kate Larson to an unscheduled part-time paramedic. Item D, approve the summer/fall event street closures in Cannon Falls. Item E, approve the 2022 contracted police services rate. And item F, Resolution 2624, accepting a monetary donation of $750 from Country Financial to the ambulance department. Is there anything the council would like to pull down? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Gesmee and a second by Bringle to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we'll get into reports. Kyle, hear from the chamber.
Good evening, council members, staff, and community. And so, I do want to let you know that the 2022 Discover Guides have arrived. They are at the Chamber of Commerce, and they are going out very fast. Speedy delivery has been there and taken over 60 boxes to be shipped out throughout the state of Minnesota. They are at all of the tourist centers. They are at chambers and tourist convention bureaus in communities that have requested them. And so, we ordered 5,750 guides this year, and I put it in a request to see how much it would cost to get more, because we're limited already, and we've only had them a To let you know, our children's Easter hunt is scheduled for Saturday, April 16th. It is going back to the city parking lot, where we will have the northeast quadrant blocked off for families to do a zigzag line to get to see the bunny. And the Easter bunny will be arriving by fire truck. He will also be giving out the colored numbers. And then, the Easter hunt is throughout downtown, where you match your colored number to the number on the bag of candy that are scattered throughout the downtown area, and a few other places. We are also collecting non-perishable foods and cash donations for the Cannon Falls area food shelf. And so, please remember that. Even if you don't have children, you can stop by and give your donations. That would be muchly, greatly appreciated. Along with our Discover Guides, I want to let you know, I did share one of our magazines that we are advertising in this year. That is part of our role for the city, is to promote Cannon Falls. And so, the Twin Cities Guest Guide, that guide that I shared with you, will be in every hotel room in the metro area. And Cannon Falls has a story on one page, a half-page story, and a half-page ad in a different part of the magazine. And I think that will get us some great exposure. We're also advertising in Minnesota Monthly, Minnesota Trails, Having Fun Biking, The Entertainment Guide. The newest one is Rover. It is an RV magazine. And what it's really pushing this year is that people working from home are purchasing RVs. And so, we have an ad in there about Cannon Falls and our campgrounds, and everything that we have to offer. The last one is AAA. I don't know how many of you get the AAA magazine. It has a little tear-out card, and you circle the numbers that you'd like to get information on that location. And so, we will be fulfilling those requests when they start coming in. And we are in, I want to say, they're June and a fall, like either September or October, so two different times. And so, therefore, we'll need more Discover Guides just to fill all of those. But, it is exciting. We are also doing a lot more online, and we will be doing a billboard in June for six months. And so, hopefully, our promotional monies will go to good use. Okay? One last thing. We do have two FunFests scheduled this summer, one in, one in June and August, and the open airfares are in July and September. They are all four on the second Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30. Okay? The difference is, FunFests will be on Mill Street, and we block off Mill Street. The open airfares are on the sidewalks of Fourth Street, Mill Street, and whenever the construction is done on Main Street. Any questions?
The open airfares are in July and September?
Yes. July and September, and the FunFests are June.
And August.
And August. And all four of those dates are the second Thursday from 4:30 to 7:30. Any other questions?
Thank you.
We're ramping up. Things are going good. Our golf tournament has four teams now, and I still don't have the registration form done. So, get your team signed up soon. Thank you much.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Okay, the only meeting we had since the last council meeting was Joint Powers Board. Anything I'd report on that?
I wasn't able to. No, Scott, he said, "Don't worry about it."
Don't, no, okay. Okay. Okay, let's go around. Mitch, got anything tonight? Sarah? Neil?
Just one item. I got notice from the Department of Ag that Cannon Falls just had their first infestation of Emerald Ash Bor. It's up on the northeast part of town, so we'll be sending out public notices here shortly and getting it out on Facebook, but just so you know, it's here. And if people have ash trees in their yard and they want to save them, that they probably should start treating them, so.
Sorry to delay.
So, that's all I got. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, let's go around. Derek, got anything? Mary Jill? Steve?
No.
Laura?
Nope.
Matt?
Nope.
Phil?
Nope.
I don't either. Well, just meeting schedules, this Thursday, we've got EDA, Public Works, and the Park Board, and next Monday, we have Finance Committee and Planning Commission, next Monday. Okay, with that, I take a motion to adjourn.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Gesmee, second by Montgomery to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?